Conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission to order. And before we get started, Cherie, I want to mention that today will mark the last day of the Mobile County Recording Secretary Sandra Trimble's.[16.82][16.82](APPLAUSE).[18.14][18.14](LAUGHTER).[20.14][20.14](APPLAUSE). I'm looking at the paper. I think Sandra started at the county when she was six years old because it says she's been here 39 years and five months.[32.86][32.86](APPLAUSE).[34.86][34.86](APPLAUSE). Congratulations, Sandra, and I thank you for your many years of service at Mobile County and to the citizens of Mobile County.
How many years were you on the court side? I've been trying to remember that.
I was there about ten. I started in 1989, and I came here in 1991.
Oh, okay.
With Judge Kane Kennedy way back when, who would always say, no matter how nasty divorce was, everybody have a good day.[67.75][67.75](LAUGHTER). Ms. Trimble remembers those remarks well.[73.00][73.00](LAUGHTER).
All right. Cherie, do we have any speakers? Anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir. No one signed up to speak today.
All right. In that case, Glenn, I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay, Commissioner. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 27, 2023, and March 13, 2023. Number two, approve the list of claims. Three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard. Number four, hold at the conference a public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendments to Program Year 1921 and 22 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs.
All right. This public hearing is now in session. Are there any comments for or against? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Number five, adopt a substantial amendments to Program Year 1921 and 22 Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. Number six, approve a customer service agreement with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc., for a one-year term with automatic month-to-month renewal beginning April 1, 2023, for a monthly fee of $4,005.22 for advanced security management and purchase of AI endpoint security with EDR CrowdStrike software for probate court. Number seven, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed asset inventory lists. Number eight, approve requests of probate court to transfer PPE disinfecting items previously purchased for the use in the election to the MetroGEO for use ahead of expiration dates. Number nine, reject all bids for project Salt Air Preserve Office Building bids exceeded budgeted amount.
So what was the budgeted amount?
Commissioner, we had $800,000 set aside for that, and the bid was 1.9 million.
You know, you're getting a lot of that, Tyler.
We're getting a lot of that right now everywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we've had, I've had discussions with several staff members about, I mean, that's 100% markup of our estimated cost. And I've had discussions with the engineering department about some of our road projects. I've had discussions with Tina about some of our building projects and parks. And I guess maybe I understand a little bit because of supply chain problems and the cost of material being higher. But 100% markup or 100% above our estimated cost, and I don't think our, if it was an isolated incident, maybe I could understand. But, I mean, this is across the board sometimes that we're having 50, 60, 70, in this case, 100% above what our engineering firms are telling us that it should cost, or our engineering department is thinking it should cost. And a lot of the times, too, and I'm just saying this, I'm putting this out publicly, that, you know, when we have the pre-bid meetings and you have one contractor show up to bid, and then his price is twice what it should be, that, to me, just looks suspicious to me. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but Brian and I have had a conversation about even halting some of our projects right now because we don't want to run over, particularly in engineering department, when we use pay-as-you-go, and there's just a certain amount of money that's there for those projects. And we'll end up running out of money before the pay-as-you-go projects are finished. So, Brian, if you want to make any comments on that?
Yes, Commissioner. We have met with our AGC locally and explained to them that they need to be safeguarding the pay-as-you-go program and not escalating prices beyond what is necessary. I mean, they can do that on their private work if they want to. That's their discretion. But we are in the process, and have been now for the last year or so, prioritizing our projects. And we only have so much in our pay-as-you-go program that we can expend. So we are in the process of searching diligently to find other funds that we can supplement the pay-as-you-go program so that we can move ahead and bid the projects that we have prioritized.
Yeah.
That's a priority to the commission, and we've been doing that now for the last year. And I think the local AGC, they understand that. But there is a, there is an escalation in material prices, equipment prices, labor prices that these contractors are honestly experiencing. And whenever we sit down and they show us their, their process of creating their bids to us and the uncertainty of trucking availabilities, of material availabilities, it's significant and it's real. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that we do not have situations where we receive one bidder, and it's much, much higher than what we estimate. We do not award bids whenever we have situations like that. We will do one of two things. We'll sit down and negotiate with a single bidder like that to get a lower price, or we, more times than not, we will just not award, and we'll wait until a better time to bid it.
And I, I'm sorry.
My, my question is, or concern, is whether this is...
Is normal. Whether this is what we can expect, and I think one way to, I don't know whether you talk to other engineers, other public works directors in other parts of the state to see if they're experiencing the same kinds of problems.
We have.
Because if they are, I don't know that this is something that, it may require a different kind of look than what we're doing if this is where we're going to be for the next however many years.
Yeah. We've had conversations with other counties. We've also had conversations with our state, folks up in Montgomery, here locally with the southwest region. It's everywhere, Commissioner, throughout the state, throughout the southeast United States. It's here. I don't know how long it's going to stay. There is so much private work out there right now. These contractors are really, really busy. They don't really even need to bid our projects.
That's what I was going to say, that there's also so much work going on around the state and the country that I think these, sometimes they come in and bid, and they're like, well, I'll just bid high, and if I get the job, great. If I don't, I don't really need the job anyway.
Yeah.
Which is not really a good attitude to have.
There is some of that going on, Commissioner. There really is.
Sure.
Especially whenever you have a larger project that some of our smaller contractors cannot handle.
Yeah.
You're relegated down to two or three potential bidders. We have seen that, and we're very cautious moving forward whenever we encounter that situation.
Yeah. I'd like to add that Tyler and I are going to be looking at the 21 CIP to look and see, because of this, what projects we can probably push out later so that we can have sufficient funding. And once we get that together, we'll circle around to the commissioners and then probably put on like agenda for approval.
Or if you can find some extra CIP money, that'd be great. Just go ahead.
No comment.
We have several, we have several on today's agenda.
I saw that, yeah.
And we have, and I know of at least two more projects in my district that I was, that I'm excited about. I mean, they're projects that we've been pushing out, that we're trying to finish. And I mean, you know, I want the public to understand, when you close a park and it stays closed for an extended period of time, we're doing our best to get everything done and get it, get the work done and get the parks open so that people can enjoy them. But when you're expecting a job to be $3.5 million and bid comes back at $8 million, you just don't have the money to pay that. And so, but there's, besides what's on today's agenda, I know of at least two projects in my district that I've already had conversation with staff that we're just not going to be able to accept those bids, and we're going to have to rebid them. Anyway, I think that, any more discussion in that, on that matter?
Just in pricing of materials, you'll see coming up on the bid, we had to rebid our dust control. And it went up, it was $184 a ton, right around that. Now, it jumped to $284 a ton. So it jumped $100 a ton, and they basically would not honor their contract. And so neither entity would, and so we had to rebid it. And so that's just going to drive the cost of our dust control through the roof.
Yeah. All right. All right, Glenn, go ahead. Sorry.
That's all right. Retainer award bid to Gordon &amp; Zachary, Inc., for Mobile Government Plaza Bi-Fold Door Replacement for a total bid in the amount of $250,000. Number 11, authorize advertising and receiving bids for 2023 elevator maintenance and service for Mobile County facilities at various locations. 12, reject all bids for safety upgrades at Camp One Building. Bids exceeded the budgeted amount.
So what did we budget for this one?[748.00][748.00](APPLAUSE).[750.00][750.00](LAUGHTER).
We anticipated that one bidding around $50,000.
Thousand, Commissioner, and I believe that was close to $200,000 bid.
So what, what were the safety upgrades?
That was to add handrail and some other items similar to that at the Camp One facility.
So, and it came back four times?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're back on this topic, let me just put this out there, too, to the public, and maybe this is something, Cherie, you can help us with. Maybe there are some contractors around this town who don't understand the process of this. Maybe there's some contractors around here, around Mobile, who have never bid on a job in Mobile County, for the county, that maybe, maybe they could start looking at the opportunity to get some of these jobs if they want to come in and start bidding them. Cherie, I don't know if you could put that out on our media or social media, but there are, I get calls almost weekly of people asking me, hey, how do I bid on county jobs? So maybe we need to start looking at expanding our advertisement so that more people in our community who own small businesses may be interested in, I mean, this seems like a reasonable job that almost anyone could do. Tyler, maybe we need to look, look at other contractors in our community and give them the opportunities to do these jobs.
Just...
The city has done, doing business with the city, and basically they invite contractors in to talk to them and walk them through what that looks like. And some, a lot of private industries are doing that now because they're having such a hard time attracting employees and contractors. And so the chamber has been working with them. So they are models, that's my point, they are models for how to put together that kind of event.
Yeah.
If that's something we decide.
Just a, just a little bit more information. Item number 10 for the bi-fold doors. We bid that as two doors with an alternate, but the two doors was almost $500,000. So we're awarding that to replace the executive side basement door, and we'll bid the maintenance side next year when we have a fresh budget. The, and the elevator, we usually bid that for three years. We've reduced that to a one-year bid, all because of costs we're seeing now.[927.91][927.91](SPEAKING IN FEMININE SPEECH).
Over everything before you sit down.
Yes, ma'am. That should do it.[939.04][939.04](LAUGHTER).
Right. Okay. Number 13, approve amending change order number two, Aquestica, to increase consulting teams' hours of extended support, up to an additional 140 hours at no additional cost to the county commission. 14, approve appropriation contract with Women's Club of Satsuma in the amount of $15,000 from District One funds to complete Phase Two of the Union Chapel replica. Number 15, approve appropriation contract with Tanner Williams Elementary Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $7,442.24 from District Two funds for technology, equipment, and carpet for Collaboration Lab at Tanner Williams Elementary School. 16, approve sponsorship agreement with Board of Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $2,000 from District Two funds for the Vex World Robotics Championships for Denton Magnet School of Technology. 17, approve appropriation contract with Sims Elementary Parent Teachers Organization in the amount of $20,000 from District Two funds to revitalize the Eagles Nest outside learning area at Sims Elementary School. 19, approve appropriation contract with Nan Gray Davis Parent Teachers Organization in the amount of $16,454.25 from District Three funds to purchase flexible furniture for Professional Development Learning Lab at Nan Gray Davis Elementary School. 19, approve contract with Malt Macdonald, Alabama, to provide professional engineering services for project Biula Battery Collection Systems lift station upgrades. 20, approve acceptance of a grant award and sub-receiving agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the redeveloped Biula Battery City Docs Project in the amount of $30,511,522, with no local match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Tina, do you, were you, since that's such a large amount of, on the grant, would you kind of give an explanation to everyone exactly what our involvement is in this project, please?
Certainly. I'll back up, excuse me, to, this is funded by Restore. So back when the Act was passed, it established the Alabama Gulf Coast Recovery Council, made up of the Commission President and Mayor of Biula Battery, Dauphin Island City of Mobile, and folks on the Ballin County side, and the State, the Governor's representative, and the Port Authority. So when these plan, we had to, they had to develop a plan, identify projects, and allocate funding. And this project was one that was championed by the City of Biula Battery. And as the plan was developed and finalized, it, there was a recognition that these large-scale projects require great deal of capacity, in-house engineering, and grant management, and science, and fiscal management as well. So it was decided at the time that the county could and would serve as the administrators and project managers for those projects. So this is a City of Biula Battery project to redevelop city docs. We're running it, and basically with input from the city and the mayor, and once it's done, it'll be turned over to the City of Biula Battery, kind of like a turnkey operation. But I did want to point out, we've had that earlier conversation about the budgetary limits. Well, $30 million was not the beginning amount of this project, and it's not just for construction, it includes engineering and other costs. That's the total amount of money available to this, and we've already gone back to the well, and the council did, and amended the plans to add some more money to this. So $30 million is all that's available to this project. If it comes in over bid, I don't know what we'll do. So maybe I, any questions? That good enough? Yeah?
I just wanted you to explain to everybody, I mean, it's a wonderful project. I've, I've been out several times and saw what the plans are. So I'm, I'm excited that, for Mobile County, but I'm excited for the town of Biula Battery, and I'm excited that the county is involved in the project as long as we can get it done for that price.
Yes, sir. It really has the potential to remake the face of Biula Battery.
It really does. And, you know, and I, I think we've all, we all know this and have said it, the, one of the biggest, it's, it's odd, when I, when I was running for the county commission, I thought, you know, most of your calls would be about, I want my road paved, or I want that, but the biggest complaint or request that I get from people all the time, all over the county, is access to the water. I mean, our county's surrounded on two sides by water, and people want access. And this is absolutely a great opportunity to give people more access to the Mississippi Sound and the Biula Battery, and also to the Gulf of Mexico.
So the design includes a boat ramp, marina, and open green space for the community to use for events and for seafood markets. It's a great project.
Yeah. Thank you.
Number 21, approve acceptance of a grant award and sub-receiving agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project Phase One and Phase Two in the amount of $3,856,137, with no match required. 22, approve contract amendment number two with Macdonald, Alabama, to provide building and construction and engineering inspection services for the Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project. 23, authorize advertising and receiving bids for a project Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project. 24, approve request from the Alabama Cooperative Extension Service to waive fees for the John Archer Arena for a new 4-H archery club to practice on the following date. Still will be no costs or preparation for the county. 25, approve amendment to home agreement with Legacy Trail regarding the development of 56 units of senior housing in conjunction with Alabama Housing Finance Authority tax credits to extend the term for substantial construction completion from March 31, 2023, until May 31, 2023. 26, authorize adopt, adopt and submit to 2021 Home ARPA allocation plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. 27, approve change order number one to statement of work number three dated November 14, 2022, for a contract with Alight Solutions. This change order adds support for payroll reporting, HCM framework, retired benefits, and motor vehicles records. The change order will increase the total cost by $55,755. 28, approve professional service contract with Hersick and Webster Creative Professionals to create a set of 12 marks for the various assets of the Mobile County Park System to be paid from the CHICSOBO budget. 29, approve professional services contract with Stokes Consulting Firm to provide project management and master planning of the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage 30, approve contract with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc., doing business as Lifelines Counseling Services in a total amount of $150,000 for a period of three years from District One funds to benefit Faith in Action Alabama Mobile Hub Anti-Gun Violence Initiative. 31, approve contract amendment number eight to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Macdonald, Alabama, dated June 25, 2021, to add Task Nine, bidding and construction, engineering, and inspection services for Project Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements Phase 1B. 32, approve agreement with Alabama Department of Economic and County Affairs for Alabama County Broadband Technical Assistance Program, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute all documents associated with this agreement. 33, take the following action on bids. 34, approve renewal of termite bond for Alabama Cooperative Extension Office from Terminix Commercial for an amount of $549 per year. 35, approve renewal of termite inspection for Grand Bay Library, Grand Bay, Alabama, from Knox Pest Control for an amount of $250 per year. 36, approve renewal of termite bond for Mobile County Soccer Complex from BB's Pests and Termite Control in the amount of $3,500 per year. 37, approve amendment to lease agreement with Williams Scotsman, Inc., doing business as Will Scott to modify rental term and rate for location at 18250 Dauphin Island Parkway, Codan, Alabama, as follows. 38, adopt sole source resolution approving renewal of software maintenance contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., for ARC GIS services in the amount of 39, approve professional services contract with MCG Business Solutions to provide assistance in migrating email services to cloud hosting services in the amount of $33,480 for the county commission. 40, approve sponsorship agreement Bay Area Women Coalition, Inc., in the amount of $1,000 from District One funds for its Team Two cleanup campaign. 41, approve appropriation contract with Florida P. Carson Visual and Performing Arts Academy, in the amount of $40,500 from District One funds for its Summer Performing Arts Institute. 42, approve sponsorship agreement with the PAC Players doing business as the PAC Theater Company Foundation in total amount of $2,000 to be divided as follows for summer camp scholarships. Excuse me. 43, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan approved August 1, 2022, to reduce funding awarded to Commonwealth National Bank, amount of $860,000 for economic development program, and award funding to the following. Mobile County Commission is amending the strategic spending plan to revise the project awarded to Commonwealth National Bank for economic development programs for small businesses, and award to other entities accomplishing the same goal. The intended outcome of the project has not changed. 44, adopt the new emergency operation plan for Mobile County as recommended by Mobile County Emergency Management Agency, and authorize the Commission President to sign the propligation page of the ELP.
All right.
Oh, on item 30, I think, is Vanessa here? I think that they originally, we were originally doing $50,000 a year for three years, but I think when we last did it, we were just going to do one appropriation, $150,000 appropriation.
(INAUDIBLE).
Uh huh. I think that's the way we deducted it from my totals, but you can just check. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Glenn?
The only other thing, Commissioner, we'll have an engine and care board meeting on Monday also.
All right. Thank you. Brian?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item number one, preliminary and final plat of the addition of Falcon Point Subdivision, that's in Commission District Three. Also preliminary and final plat of the resub of Lot Three, Coward Road Property Subdivision, that's also Commission District Three. And approve preliminary and final plat of the resubdivision of Heritage Alto Subdivision, which is also in Commission District Three. Item two, approve the disadvantaged business enterprise plan for FY 2023 for the Jeremiah Denton Airport. Item three, accept report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition for private dirt road maintenance for Debra Lane and Roger Road in accord with Act 2019-307. The petition, as submitted, is incomplete and did not meet the criteria for consideration. Item four, approve purchase of one seat of Carlson Civil Suit Software. Item five, approve annual software maintenance agreement renewal with Bentley Systems Incorporated for a period of February 14, 2023 to February 13, 2024. Item six, approve a non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities with Alabama Power on Monroe Lane Project, which is one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. No cost to the county. Item seven, approve agreement for relocation of utility water line with South Alabama Utilities for Mac... for McDavid Road Project, which is one of our 2018 pay-as-you-go projects. Estimated cost to the county is a little over $60,000. Item eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track One, Track Three, and Track Four on our Booth Town Road Project, which is one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item nine, approve right-of-way agreement for Track Five on our Pierce Creek Road Project, which is one of our 2020 pay-as-you-go projects. Item 10, approve right-of-way agreement for Track Five on our Highmont Drive Drainage Improvement Project, and that is funded through our 116 program. And that is currently it, Commissioners?
All right. If no one else has anything, we'll stand adjourned until Monday, March 27, at 10:00 a.m. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you for being here.